The Lindbergh Schools Board of Education meeting number fifteen forty-eight is now called to order. Uh, please note that due to the inclement weather in the area on February seventeenth, this meeting was rescheduled to this evening. And due to the continued weather issues and ice conditions in the area tonight, we have moved this meeting to Zoom and are broadcasting live on to the public on the district's YouTube channel as well. So Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Go moved.
Second.
By Kathy, second by Jen. Uh, we will do roll call votes this evening since we're uh, meeting virtually, so Jennifer Miller.
Yes.
Kristi Watts?
Yes.
Mike Tischlis?
Yes.
Kathy Karlock Lorenz?
Yes.
Matt Alonso?
Yes.
Megan Better?
Yes.
And Mike Shamia, yes, so motion passes seven zero. Uh, we will stand for the pledge of allegiance if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation under God indivisible, with liberty, peace, and love for all.
Thank you.
It's been a while since we've been on Zoom. We forgot that only one of us is supposed to say that, so. But we had it down like during twenty twenty when we were meeting this way all the time. So sorry about that, public.
We weren't quite in unison there, but that's all right. Uh, four point O special recognition, so we're unable to have Sappington with us tonight. Uh, they will join us next month and in our March meeting for their recognition portion of the meeting. Uh, so we'll move to five point O, which is resolutions. We do have one resolution this evening, uh, which is National School Social Work Week. Uh, it's March sixth to the twelve, so we just want to take a minute here to thank all Lindbergh's social workers and the important role that they play with all of our students uh, in the community here and in the lives of those students, so. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented? I'm moved. Motion by Megan, second. We'll do the motion by Megan. Who would like to second?
Second.
Second by Mike, thank you. Uh, so roll call vote Jennifer Miller?
Yes.
Kristi Watts?
Yes.
Mike Tischlis?
Yes.
Kathy Karlock Lorenz?
Yes.
Matt Alonso?
Yes.
Megan Better?
Yes.
And Mike Shamia, yes, so motion passes seven zero. Move to six point O, which is citizen comments regarding agenda items. And because we're meeting virtually, uh, we will not have that portion available for the meeting tonight, but those who would like to comment, uh, can, as far as this meeting, email to boe@lindberghschools.ws and you can also send communication or anything regarding a comment you'd like to make to us to that email at any time. But specifically for this meeting, that's where you want to send your comments. Uh, we'll move to seven point O, which is communications, so we'll start with calendar of events. Uh, so Madam Secretary?
Alrighty, so the high school winter musical is running right now and obviously not tonight. Hopefully they can do, oh my gosh, I'm sorry, the dog is. Um, tomorrow night they will be able to have their uh, present um, show and Saturday. And the name of it is the Hello Girls and it's a real life story about Hello Girls who ran switchboards in France for the United States during the world, during World War Two. So that was kind of cool that I would share that. Um, on the twenty-eighth is the Technology Board Advisory Meeting. On March first is a virtual parent speaker series, Why Belonging Matters with Jer- Jeremy Mapp. And then there's also a choir concert. On March seventh is the LHS Night of Bands, which I always enjoyed when my daughter was in there. And March eighth is the Middle School Night of Bands. Facilities Board Advisory is on the ninth and March fourteenth is our Board of Education Candidate Forum. And also there's a virtual gifted speaker series, Gamify with Hollis Moore. The Financial Board Advisory Meeting is the fifteenth. And then on the seventeenth, we are all back again for our regular Board of Education meeting.
All right, thank you. Seven point O two is where we report on any meetings that we attended. Uh, so does anyone have anything they would like to report?
Okay, so I attended a FBLA meeting. Um, it was an invitation and love that group to um, um, anyway, nice job by those teachers that do that, Julie Durham and Judy Gerard. And it was about leadership and it was great because administration was there, Dr. Lake was there. Um, and the kids just asked us questions about leadership and so it was fantastic. Um, been watching a lot of basketball and great games, good, good challenges and good games. And yesterday I believe I saw um, a young Shamia trying to shoot some hoops on the floor too at the staff and student game at Sparing and the students rocked it, so.
That was a very entertaining game and he did hit a three pointer with a buzzer. I'll just have to say that, so. Not to win the game, but it's, it still matters, right?
Right.
Anybody else have any meetings they want to report on? Okay, seven point O three announcements. We do have some announcements, so I'll throw it back to you, Kristi.
Okay, so the first announcement we have is the Board Candidate Forum. It will be held Monday, March fourteenth at six thirty. It will be there at the central office. We have two open seats. Jennifer Miller is the incumbent who will be rerunning for her seat. And then we also have David Randleman, Carrie Clay, and Julie Voss, who will um, have put their hat in the ring for the other available seat. If you're unable to attend, it will be live streamed on the district's YouTube channel, so you can catch it either way. I believe that will be the last forum before election. I'm not sure, um, but I, I think it could be, so you might want to stay tuned on that. And I am going to pass it off then to Dr. Lake for the second announcement.
Absolutely. So, School Board Recognition Week is coming up. It's March sixth through the twelfth. So I just wanted to take a moment and just say, you know, thank you to our Board of Education and to all Boards of Education for giving their time and their talents and just everything that they provide communities. Um, specifically this one that I have the privilege of working with, um, you just, it's a, sometimes it's a very thankless job and there's a lot of time that you put in, um, attending committee meetings and doing that and the hearts of that you have for kids and this, the entire community does not go unnoticed. So just thank you for all that you guys do and just um, just continue to uh, keep as we do our work, just keeping kids in the center of all of our decisions and so thank you for that and just uh, again, thank you for giving for your time and basically volunteering, so we appreciate that.
All right, thank you, Dr. Lake. Uh, so we'll move to the Board of Education meeting agenda, so back to you, Kristi.
March seventeenth is our next Board of Education meeting. It's at seven PM at the central office. I'm hoping the weather will be nice so we can be in present. And our agenda items are human resources, financial reports, and items, curriculum revision, salary schedules, and a second reading of tonight's board policies that are here in our agenda. And Mike, I'll put it back to you.
Uh, we have no member appointments, so we'll move hopefully to the MSBA report if it works properly, so Colin.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of February. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at what's known as competency-based education. The idea that students should advance in their education based on their mastery of skills and expectations, not based on seat time. A new statewide group called the Success Ready Students Work Group is studying the issue here in Missouri. That group is made up of educators, school board members, administrators, parents, and other stakeholders. One of the facilitators of the group is Dr. Pam Hedgepath, and she tells us competency-based learning meets the individual needs of students.
So competency-based learning is really centered on student learning. And it is an ongoing process of having really clear learning targets and then students and teachers and parents um, using assessment tools to really identify where the student learning is. And then where student learning is, then designing instructional practices that really meet the individual needs of students. It's highly motivating for students. It keeps parents and teachers and students very informed on where the current learning level is, so that the learning can be scaffold and supported to really meet the individual needs of students.
Another facilitator for the project is Dr. Mike Fulton. He tells us the goal of the group is to develop a framework for the use of competency-based learning in Missouri.
As part of that framework, redesign the current state assessment system, including the MAP test, to better support students, educators, and informed parents on where their child is on their learning continuum and support them in their growth toward being college, career, and workplace ready. We also are going to have a component of this work that will speak to the need for flexibility by school districts who want to innovate in this space of competency-based learning and assessment.
The Success Ready Students Work Group will be holding a series of meetings during the coming weeks with the goal of having a framework developed by early May. We will be keeping you informed about this group's progress. Teacher recruitment and retention continues to be a major issue throughout Missouri. School districts were facing a teacher shortage prior to the COVID nineteen pandemic, and it has only worsened during the past two years. The minimum starting teacher salary in Missouri is twenty-five thousand dollars right now, the lowest in the nation. Governor Mike Parson proposed raising that minimum to thirty-eight thousand dollars during his recent State of the State address to the General Assembly. Unfortunately, Missouri is currently ranked fiftieth in the United States for starting teacher pay. And half of our new teachers leave the profession by their fifth year. This is unacceptable and we must do better. That's why we are proposing to raise teacher pay in every corner of this state. Under Governor Parsons' proposal, the state would fund seventy percent of the cost of raising the minimum teacher salary to thirty-eight thousand dollars and local school districts would be responsible for thirty percent of the cost. There are many other issues being considered in the current session of the General Assembly that are of great concern to MSBA and school board members throughout the state, including the expansion of charter schools, making school board elections partisan, and moving school board elections to the November election date. As the legislative session progresses, we will keep you updated on developments again this year through our Legislative Voice Newsletter, sent to members via email each Friday during the session, our Twitter feed with up-to-the-minute developments, through critical issue alerts, and periodic webinars. We urge you to stay in contact with your legislators during the session and communicate to them the impact legislation will have on your school district. And don't forget, this year's MSBA Legislative Forum is scheduled for March seventh in Jefferson City. Check the MSBA website for registration information. MSBA also is pleased to once again sponsor School Board Recognition Week in Missouri, March sixth through twelfth this year, as proclaimed by Governor Parsons. It's a great opportunity for school districts and communities to recognize the work of school board members and the important role local Boards of Education play as leaders of our public schools. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting and so long from Columbia.
Right, so we'll move to special reports, uh, eight point O. We'll start with Joel, Finance and Facilities. Have you had any?
Hey, Mike, before we do that, I, I do want to go back to that board report because I think it's important because this work with the success-ready group um, in this kind of redefining what education looks like in the state of Missouri um, with this competency base, you know, we've been having lots of conversation in our district for the past three or four years around this and so um, it's really nice to see that the state at state levels kind of, we're going to dovetail right into the direction that DESI is moving and we've had some conversations and just some of the work that we've been doing here and I'm going to turn it over to Tara really quick because we have a member of our team that's actually facilitating a group um, around redefining what the MAP assessment will look like in the future. So Tara?
Yeah, so as you know, for the last uh, few years, we've been a part of Missouri Assessment Partnership, which has kind of been this grassroots statewide movement to look at alternative ways that we can assess students that would be more authentic, would give more timely feedback, and would focus on the growth of all learners, which really fits perfectly um, with competency base. We want our students to be learning, growing, propelling themselves forward. Um, so Dr. Fulton, who you saw in that video specifically, um, is a former local superintendent who was kind of the, the backbone of this work initially. And so the fact that we are now seeing this become a state-led, um, in conjunction with DESI is huge. It means there's actually traction um, with the work that um, regional school districts have been wanting to do for quite a while. Um, and we are fortunate that Dr. Lawson, our Executive Director of Assessment and Student Services, is one of the facilitators. There are very, there are only a few districts in the St. Louis area that are represented um, as facilitators and, and we are fortunate that she's one of them. So we are going to be directly connected to the conversations that are happening and be able to continue to fuse the work that we've been doing around this with the direction of DESI for the future. So some really exciting momentum here.
Thank you. That's great stuff. Um, so we'll go to the cabinet updates now and we'll start with Joel.
Yes, um, the finance committee met. Of course, we always meet the week before, well, the Tuesday before the board meeting, which was last week. Uh, we went over the agenda items and um, I guess an item to note is we are um, one item on the board meeting that we dug into is another investment option to school districts. Uh, school districts are very strict in how they invest their funds. Um, we've been working with one co-op for many, many years um, that just tailors specifically to school districts um, and our strict investment um, policy. And so there's competition in that market, which I think competition is good. So when interest rates come back, um, we'll have several different sources to look at more investor money besides just our local banks, which we always do um, reach out to them as well. Um, that we talked a little bit about, it's, we're coming in the budget season for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year and um, our inflation rate for setting tax rates for the school year next year, which were released. And of course, it's higher than it has been in past years, so that was quite a bit of discussion with the group. And then we haven't had facilities advisory meeting, but we will be having one um, in the next week. And um, that will be just reporting out on our projects that we are planning for the summer. We're going to go over the demographic report at that meeting as well. Um, and so we'll work for on that next meeting.
All right, thank you. Uh, Dr. McKinney, HR?
Yes, our group met. Uh, we talked about the monthly personnel report. We also talked about an item that's uh, on the board agenda tonight, the workforce retention um, program and its program that's designed to um, reward classified staff and incentivize longevity. Um, uh, classified or support staff um, is, is an area that we see turnover, particularly in the labor environment we're in right now. And so this is a, a plan to incentivize uh, retention and longevity. Um, so we think it will be very effective. Um, and that was uh, the majority of our discussion uh, at that meeting.
All right, thank you. Dr. Sparks, your three committees?
All right, so Technology Board Advisory um, has not met since our, our last board meeting. We meet again on Monday. Teaching and Learning just met earlier this week and we looked at a revised form for our reconsideration process and our checklist, um, when texts are challenged, when we want, uh, when community members want a, another review of those materials. So we're cleaning up that process in accordance with the policies that are here for first reading tonight. Um, and then we, we had guests join us from our middle schools, Dr. Jenna Wright and Dr. Lauren Boger, to talk through the work that has been happening with standards-based um, instruction and grading at the middle school level to start to get feedback about the implementation plan. Um, as many of you, as you all know, um, we have a, a elementary standards-based report card that is being revised for next school year. And so as we look to continue this work, what's our, what are our next steps as we look at middle school? So got some really good feedback that we'll use to start designing that implementation plan. And then Student Life met a couple of weeks ago and for the last few meetings, we've really been investigating social emotional learning screeners. Um, we started with Satchel Pulse, then looked to Panorama. This time we focused our energy on Sabers, which is one that we currently have in play. Um, it's part of our Fastbridge um, assessment platform. So we reviewed that with the, with the committee in order to get input on that and then went further to say, you know, what do you feel like you need as, as parents um, in terms of what our social emotional screener contains? Um, so starting to talk through and get feedback on our decision-making process as we move forward with that.
All right, thank you. We'll move to nine point O, which is action items by consent. We have action items nine point O one to nine point one three. Uh, would anyone like to remove any of these items for individual consideration? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve consent items nine point O one to nine point one three? Noting there are none for nine point O seven or nine point O eight.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Matt, second?
I second it.
Oh, you second it? Second by Jen? All right, any questions or comments? Okay, we'll move to a roll call vote. Jennifer Miller?
Yes.
Hold on, hold on, Mike. I'm sorry, I was on mute. Uh, I just had, I just had a comment and observation uh, on this. Uh, again, these are all items by consent. I, you know, am not looking to pull anything. Obviously, there's a lot of important issues here. And under contracts, um, I know we have a group of contracts that we're looking to uh, that we're looking to move forward on and fund and I can see that, you know, all of those would, would deserve consideration and should be funded. I had questions about one item because within contracts, I think it's, I think it's the first item. Uh, there is, excuse me, I um, a, a contract regarding, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, you know, regarding our pilot program. And I just was wondering uh, if anybody there could just provide some clarification, maybe you could, Tara? And this was the pilot program to achieve three thousand. I, I know that Achieve has been around a while, is my understanding, uh, as a company. Uh, I just had some uh, questions regarding what I found in the Terms of Service. And I think, I think you guys know that I'm somewhat of a stickler on data and student data in particular. So uh, looking at the Terms of Service, uh, page four of seven, uh, I just noted that uh, it, it states that COPA, and you know what COPA is? Uh, it's the Children's Online Privacy Protection Act. Um, you know, it allows users, users meaning the district, as permitted by COPA, and I'm reading from here. Uh, "We rely on you," capital Y, "in place of, in place of a parent or legal guardian to provide consent and authorization regarding use of services and collection of personally identifiable information of students under thirteen." And that really surprised me. I kind of went through this thinking it would be just kind of standard, you know, aggregated data, nothing identifiable and so forth. And so I, I saw that and um, uh, I have, I guess I have enough concerns about that uh, along with some other things I found out about um, Achieve three thousand, just kind of looking into it and looking at their program and literacy. And sometimes I get concerned that their emphasis uh, maybe not be entirely on what we need now, which is uh, which is skill building uh, in literacy. Uh, and you know, instead incorporate some other notions as well. Uh, you know, particularly related to social justice and so forth. And I actually got on the site and I read some of the examples of um, uh, you know, readings that they had and I thought many were thought-provoking uh, and uh, were really well done. But I'm just looking at the overall scope of things for this particular contract. And for that reason, that's why I wanted to make it clear, I'm not going to vote for a yes on this consent agenda. But I believe that the rest of this consent agenda should certainly move forward. Uh, but I, at this point, I am going to uh, vote in the negative on it. So I just wanted to say that upfront because we typically go through consent agendas and kind of just move through it pretty rapidly. And I wanted to clarify that for everyone.
And two things um, to note on that. First of all, with regard to the pilot programs, that is part of our next teaching and learning board advisory for the secondary pilots, um, to get input and feedback from the board advisory. So we can definitely touch base on any concerns that exist with regard to the content. Um, and then the, that is, my understanding is, I'll have to double check this. My understanding is on that age thirteen and under, um, that we are meeting the COPA requirements. We go back and have to get specific, explicit um, parent permission if the, if the data is not used in a COPA compliant way. So my interpretation of that phrase that you referenced is that it means that, that this um, this, this resource is COPA compliant and doesn't require further approval from parents.
Okay, okay. All right, well, thanks. Thanks for the clarification.
Okay, so we'll now move to the, the roll call vote, so uh, we'll start. Jen Miller?
Yes.
Kristi Watts?
Yes.
Mike Tischlis?
No.
Kathy Karlock Lorenz?
Yes.
Matt Alonso?
Yes.
Megan Better?
Yes.
Okay, Mike Shamia is a yes, so motion passes six to one. And that takes us to ten point O, which is the individual action items. We have three individual action items this evening. Uh, we'll start with ten point O one, which is the request for reconsideration for the book, The Testaments. Um, so we're looking for a motion to approve, to retain the Testaments by Margaret Atwood in a library without restrictions as presented. So do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion by Megan, second. Who was that?
Kristi.
Kristi, Kristi is second. So any questions or discussions before we move to roll call vote? All right. Mike, did you have a question? I saw your light came on.
Yeah, I, I would just, you know, encourage everybody to, you know, review the documentation, everything on the material that was produced. I know, you know, Eric, you spent time putting together the uh, the report. Read the report. Also read, uh, of course, um, the appeal, the reason for the appeal. I can't recall how many, I believe up to like eighteen, uh, parents or community members sought this appeal. But I would encourage everybody to do that, um, you know, before, um, you know, making a snap judgment on things. I mean, I having, I reviewed it. Uh, you know, I did not sit in on this particular uh, committee of review. Uh, so I can't say that I was firsthand there at the, you know, considerations for it. But that's it. Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Okay, any other questions or discussions before we move to roll call vote? All right. All right. Jennifer Miller?
Yes.
Kristy Watts?
Yes.
Mike Tischlis?
No.
Kathy Karlock Lorenz?
Yes.
Matt Alonso?
Yes.
Megan Vetter?
Yes.
Okay, Mike Chamia is yes also, so that motion carries six, one. We'll move to ten point O two, request for consideration for All Bars Aren't Blue by George M. Johnson. Do I have a motion to retain All Bars Aren't Blue by George M. Johnson in the library without restrictions as presented?
Some moved.
Motion by Megan's second?
Second.
Second, was that Matt?
Yes.
Second by Matt? Now we'll move. Any questions or discussions on this particular motion?
My only comment on this, Mike, was that I felt like this was a, it was a well-written book and because it was a memoir, you know, and not nonfiction, sorry, you know, not fiction. You know, it did delve into a very personal story that is worth consideration. It's unfortunate, though, that there are at least a couple of scenes in this, in this particular book that are pretty pretty harsh, I would say, in terms of the, in terms of what's described. And everybody has to take that into consideration too. So with that, those are my comments. And again, I just encourage everyone to read the reports.
And to go off of that, I think it's also important to note that with with those difficult scenes, the author is very explicit at telling the reader that at the very beginning of the book. So there is those warnings for the reader that the author provides to say these are difficult things to hear, these are difficult things for me to write. So there is a lot of respect that is given to the reader from the author in that, in that regard.
Okay, and I did forget to mention, I guess, Dr. Cochran has joined us too. So if you have any questions for him as well, he's available. All right, hearing none, we'll move to the roll call vote. Jennifer Miller?
Yes.
Kristy Watts?
Yes.
Mike Tischlis?
Uh, no.
Kathy Karlock Lorenz?
Yes.
Matt Alonso?
Yes.
Megan Vetter?
Yes.
And Mike Chamia is a yes, so that motion passes six, one as well. That moves us to ten point O three. This is the request for reconsideration for this book is gay. So do I have a motion to retain the book, the bucket? This book is gay, written by Juno Dawson in the library without restriction as presented.
Some of them.
Motion by Megan's second?
I'll second.
Second by Kristy. So we'll move to questions or discussions on this particular motion.
Yeah, I just had a few observations, and I would appreciate the response by some of my fellow board members to these. You know, I found, you know, the subject of this book obviously is an important one. You know, what I think the author was doing in this book, though, the way the author characterized the issue was to, in an attempt, you know, to fight against negative stereotypes and to pursue, you know, acceptance. The author basically turns around and uses negative stereotypes and denigration of other people to the point that it is, it's, it's very bad. I was actually kind of stunned by this because what happens is, as you read this, you're finding that certain people are kind of, you know, compartmentalized. And particularly, as, as it turns out, people, people of various faiths, I mean, world faiths are sort of an object of criticism in this book from the perspective of the author. And, you know, there were, there were some comments in here that were really kind of disturbing. You know, particularly as it's reflected on how you have conversations with people of various states. And, you know, the author, I don't believe is a theologian, but the author really delves into theology in relation to the subject matter. And I just found this incredible. And so, you know, what really stood out to me was page one O six. If you have this book, please open it. You know, the author is discussing various, I guess, you know, religious traditions and how to argue, how to argue with Muslims, how to argue with Christians and so forth. And as somebody who has extensively studied world religions and faiths, you know, I could imagine a number of people, particularly in our diverse community at Lindbergh, including people, you know, who are immigrants here, might find this very offensive. But the most important one that stood out to me was on page one O six, under Judaism. The author begins not being funny, but these guys kind of started it. I read that and I was appalled. Kind of in this day and age that someone could actually write about a whole people and faith in that kind of derogatory fashion, started it all. That, that is really, really troubling. And I, not being a, you know, not being a person of Jewish background, but of all the folks out there who, you know, can connect with that or identify that way, that, that should be troubling in our day and age. So the means by which the author makes the case i- is just really, you know, it's turning, it's turning one side against another. It's using arguments against another side that the author is saying is too often used against the other side, if you understand what I'm saying. So it's, I am, I am absolutely voting no on this. And I'll leave my comments at that. But thank you.
So Mike, I hear you talking a lot about arguments. And I guess my only thought on that would to encourage you to shift that mindset a little bit because I don't see it as arguments. I see it as the author giving resources for people to stand up for themselves, which is very different. They're not arguing against a religion. They are facing, they are facing something that sees them as less than. And so I see that as a way for people to be able to, to stand up for themselves and find, find strength in, in who they are and their identity. And so that would be my only suggestion is that that I just encourage you to, to shift out of that argument mindset and into that you're dealing with a person who, who is feeling attacked by their own identity. That, that's the all that I would put, put with that.
So Megan, do you feel as though the comment, or actually the, the statement I just said, reading out of the book is an authentic one? That should, that is okay to read and to understand as is? In other words, if somebody is saying that one people started it all, you know, to me, that harkens back to something that one would have read maybe in another country in the nineteen thirties. And I find it very offensive. And I find it, I mean, just unimaginable that anybody could come to that defense. But beyond that, and also just generally the way the argument runs, and it's an argument. I disagree with you. It's a case that the author makes. She actually says, or the author actually says how to argue with the Muslim, how to argue with the Christian, how to be confrontational. That's what it sounds like to me. And we who are promoting openness, we are promoting diversity and inclusiveness. That's her, I mean, that's, that's running in the opposite direction. I just don't understand that. And so we also have another issue with this book. And the issue is, yes, there is an app in the book and I've read about it. And, you know, it's an eighteen plus app for, you know, meeting up with dates and so forth. Not that I can see appropriate for minors to have access to. So, and I, I read the arguments kind of back and forth on that in the report. And it just seems to me that, again, on its face, you know, bringing up or encouraging and actually describing how to use an adult eighteen plus dating app for a child, a minor, that could be reading this and who are maybe thirteen or fourteen, they pulled it off the shelves. I, I don't see, you know, how we as a district can support that. I also, I'm also curious because I think it was mentioned in the report, and Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, that this book is seen as somewhat of an encyclopedia for its subject matter, that it's, it's recognized, referred to and so forth. But I'm just curious, and I would ask this of our librarians or whoever can find, have access to this. Do we have any comparable books to this one? Describing sexual relations in, I believe in the report, it referred to traditional sexual relations, heterosexual sex. Do we have any similar books like this one regarding, you know, that topic? I, I would just be curious to know. So if somebody can look that up for me, I would appreciate it.
I will say that I kind of found chapter nine, just the nature of how it was written concerned me so much is that it was kind of instructional in nature and a how-to guide as opposed to a work of fiction or a memoir discussing your past lived experiences. So that was hard for me.
I think I had that similar concern as you sort of moved away from anything autobiographical to more of a how-to instructional type thing. So.
Which I think is kind of what Mike Tischlis is also referring to in his last comment.
Correct.
Yeah.
It seemed into such.
It felt like it was really written for beyond high school, especially the app and the instructions that are in there and, and the how-to pieces I felt was, was something beyond high school. Eric, did you have any comments you want to share or shed some light?
Well, I mean, I, I think the report that was presented pretty much speaks to the views of the committee. So I, I don't, I, I don't know if it's appropriate for me to necessarily speak on behalf of the whole committee with my own personal views of, of the book. I will say that all these topics were definitely discussed. It is, it is definitely different than most of the books that we have read in that it is a nonfiction book. And so it, it, so I think that's maybe why it feels like it reads as almost like an encyclopedic how to navigate the world as someone who this book speaks to, or the different, the different groups that this book speaks to, because it does speak to multiple different types of individuals. And so so we definitely discussed all those things. I think really where the, where the group landed is, is kind of articulated in the report itself. And anything I would add to that would, would be my own personal reaction, but I was, I was merely one voice on this group.
Any more discussion or questions for Dr. Cochran? Okay, we'll move to the roll call vote then. Jennifer Miller?
No.
Kristy Watts?
No.
Mike Tischlis?
No.
Kathy Karlock Lorenz?
No.
Matt Alonso?
No.
Megan Vetter?
Yes.
And Mike Chamia, I'm also a no on this particular one. So the vote is one yes and six no. So therefore, this motion, particular motion is lost. But now I'd like to read the book. This book is written by Juno Dawson, the library with restrictions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Matt. And now we'll open it up again for any discussion or questions you might have for Dr. Cochran.
Thanks, Mike. I just want to first speak to the work that the committee is doing, and what they're doing is really difficult. And I, the reason for my yes vote is because I, I, I trust the balance of the committee. I trust the discussion that they're doing and that they are really looking at it through multiple lenses. I did, I, I, I was around for the discussion of, of this book. And what struck me the most is, is that the conversation is deep and it's, it's vulnerable. And I just want to extend my appreciation to the committee in, in making these hard decisions. And I'll speak for myself in saying that I can understand the difficulty in deciding whether to retain this book with or without restriction. And specifically because of the how-to nature of it, that can feel difficult. There were a lot of things that I liked about the book when it came to the how-to nature, more so about how to have healthy conversations with people, how to speak to your parents, how to find confidence in coming out. The how-to on sexual activity did give me pause. And I can completely understand the need or reason to feel that there might need to be another layer of, of restriction there. So I can also support that piece of it. But my initial vote is really in supporting our, our committee and supporting the decisions that they're making and, and just the the difficulty of understanding that this is one book out of many books that are kind of targeted at a marginalized group. And the understanding that it feels that it could feel, and again, I'm speaking for myself, that it could feel difficult to, to remove or to remove or to not put a restriction on, on this book, especially when you're looking at the kind of overarching theme that we are seeing a lot of. And really what also made me think more is just like the idea of that maybe especially with this how-to nature is something that needs a little bit more context around sex education and that having this book on its own could, could be just questionable. So that's, I just wanted to put that out there for people to understand that the committee, I, I trust them, I honor their work. But I, you know, I can also support the idea that maybe we do need just a little bit, a little bit more for our students to, to just understand that, that there is mature content in here.
I, I wanted to add to Megan, to her compliments to the committee, obviously, because I've sat in on a few committees and this is these are often, I mean, very difficult things to discuss. And, you know, it's just the nature of what we're going through now. And I can say, you know, from my observance, that, you know, people have very thoughtful comments that they share with each other back and forth. I have to say, and I have to digress with, with, from Megan a little bit on this. I, I sometimes think that a lot of the opinions, and again, this, so much of this is subjective in how we interpret what we read. But so many Uh, but, uh, so many of the opinions often come from a similar perspective. At least that's what I have found. But having said that, I think that, uh, their, their work, uh, nevertheless, uh, you know, should be respected. Uh, it's, it's difficult and, uh, you know, they have to work through conversations on literally pages of a book. I mean, going to specific pages and then talking about what is going on in those specific pages. So, um, my last thought on this is I, I know we're getting ready to, uh, to vote on restriction. My only concern is moving forward. I know we're going to, uh, have a first reading of our new library policy. And perhaps, and I know it's been brought up, we're almost kind of premature because it, in many of these discussions and the decisions that have been made by the committee, we don't know ultimately in the end what our library policy will be regarding, uh, checking out books, placement of books and so forth, and restrictions and so on and so forth. So it almost seems to me in a sense, a little premature, um, to even vote on this right now, uh, because, uh, we're not entirely sure what we're going to mean by restrictions until we finally discuss and pass a new library policy, materials policy. Thanks, Mike.
And I know I said it last time, and I just think it's important to reiterate again that every parent does have the right to reach out to the library and ask that their child not check out certain books. So there still is that option for parents as well.
Any further discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to roll call vote. Jennifer Miller?
Yes.
Christie Watts?
Yes.
Mike Tischlis?
Yes.
Kathy Karla Lorenz?
Yes.
Matt Alonso?
Yes.
Megan Vetter?
Yes.
And Mike Cham is yes as well. So this motion passes seven zero. Thank you for the, uh, open discussion, everyone. And we'll move to eleven point oh reports. We have two reports for information only tonight. Uh, you can review eleven point oh, one point oh one, the communications plan and contact Beth Johnson with any questions on that particular um, report. And then eleven point oh one oh two is the official twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two enrollment summary. Contact Dr. McKinney for any questions regarding that particular report. And, um, but I think, are you going to do a brief report on the demographic and enrollment, uh, study, Dr. McKinney?
Yes, I'd plan to if there's time.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and speak to that?
Okay. And I, I believe we have some slides possibly. Um, thank you, Colin. Um, so the district, um, worked with Business Information Services to do a, a full demographic study, uh, of our district. This includes, includes enrollment, housing, um, trends. Um, they didn't have access to census data because some delays, but, um, we do a, we, we do a demographic study with a, with a professional group, um, every few years um, and get a long-term, um, look at enrollment. What I'm going to talk about tonight, it's a ninety six page report. So I would encourage you to dig in as deep as you prefer, but tonight I just wanted to share a few slides um, that speak to the enrollment projections over the next ten years. So we can go to the next slide, please, Colin. This is our district. Um, we have six zip codes and you can see, um, where we, where we land. We're spread out across numerous communities. Um, and, uh, and of course, as you know, we, we go pretty far west out into Fenton, um, even up north into Kirkwood and Afton. So that's just a quick look at our district from above. Next slide. Um, this page I wanted to point out is some interesting data in that, um, people ask oftentimes, how, how is your kindergarten enrollment going up when it's always reported that, um, you know, births, live births, as they call it, um, continue to go down. Um, and it really has to do, uh, with, um, families moving. And, uh, so it's, it's, it's live birth is not something we can use, as it says in this report. Um, live, live birth is tricky and it's not something we can use, um, as reliable data to give us an indication of what our kindergarten enrollment is going to be. So we really have to use history. Um, and we, and we look at, um, each year, we, we pay attention to live birth data, but we look at the history of enrollment to, to give us projections on, on how many kindergartners are going to walk through the doors each year. Next slide, please. Um, the next few slides really just show the ten year projections. Um, what I appreciated about this group is they gave us three, um, three trend lines, a, a, a high, a medium and a low. Um, the first, the first, um, box I would point out is the, is the overall district projection. This shouldn't be a surprise to anyone that's been following, uh, projections over the years. Um, you can see the high projection eighty two eighty. Um, we've been talking about eight thousand as reality for Lindbergh for, for quite some time. Uh, and then we've got that range seventy seven oh nine would be, um, their low projection. Um, oftentimes with these, um, that's just really a kind of a margin of error and it's likely going to fall somewhere in the middle. We do our own projections as well each year, um, and we, and we measure them up with these to kind of see how it's tracking. Um, but, uh, eighty two eighty is, is pretty right on what, what we've been thinking as far as, uh, Lindbergh's ten year, uh, trajectory. You can see the buildings here and we'll, we'll, we'll continue to scroll here, but the buildings all take a kind of a different path, but we're really all, we're all going to the same place, which is um, contributing to that eighty two eighty. There's increases in, in all buildings. If you will go to the next slide, um, Colin, you can see, again, I talked about kind of some, some peaks and valleys, but ultimately increasing. Um, and the one building I would point out that is actually in the next slide is Kinnerly. Kinnerly is our last building. Kinnerly is, is projected to see some much needed relief in the next couple of years. Um, when we look at Kinnerly, right now, Kinnerly has, um, twenty one classrooms and each of those are, are very, very full. So they have high class sizes. We're still within our matrix, but we've got high class sizes. As we study the projections for the, the downward trend in the, in the next five years, that stems from very large classes exiting the dis, the, the building and more reasonably sized classes entering. However, what it won't do is it won't decrease the fact that we're still going to need twenty one classrooms in Kinnerly. Um, what it may do is provide Kinnerly some opportunity to not be in hallways and, um, not have um, two principals in a, in a, in a tiny closet for an office and, uh, which is not great for meetings or meetings with parents or kids. Um, you know, I know we're talking about the PEGS program, uh, ultimately leaving Kinnerly. And that is still very much important because as you can see, long range, uh, Kinnerly is going to get, is going to recover and be right back. Um, uh, where they, where they are currently more than likely. So, um, Kinnerly is a little bit of an anomaly in that we are projecting some decrease in enrollment, but I would say with the space that they have, uh, that's much needed relief. Um, not at all alarming, but, but good news really. Other than that, all other buildings are projected to be, um, to continue to grow. Um, the report does say that, um, the district has the capacity, um, to handle all projected enrollment growth. We simply may have to do some reorganizing, um, as to where, uh, students go. We've got some buildings that are are at seventy five percent of capacity and we've got other buildings becoming pretty full. So certainly there, there will likely need to be a discussion about, you know, our, how we organize our district, but globally, we will be able to handle the capacity in the, in the facilities that we have. The last slide I would point out is, um, trend line trends are based on the past. So if you look at the last ten years and you apply it to the next ten, what you can see is the trend line, uh, demographic, it almost perfectly matches the high, um, projection. So you see that top box there, it says high, medium and low. That was the district, high, medium, low from the first slide. And then what is the historical trend? It almost perfectly matches, um, the high. So there are two indicators saying that high, um, that high, uh, estimation might be accurate. However, looking back ten years and looking forward ten years, a lot can happen over the span of twenty years. So, um, we shall see, but that's, that's our, um, presentation for tonight. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Dr. McKinney?
Not a question, just a comment. I, I, this doesn't surprise me at all when you look at our brand new beautiful high school that we're building.
Right. Build it, they will come. I heard somewhere.
Right.
Yeah. I think it's great just for us to be able to see or have a projection and for planning, which is what we've talked about from day one since Dr. Lake joined us is what is that five year plan? What is that seven year plan? So I, I think that's fantastic information.
All right. Thank you, Dr. McKinney. Appreciate it. We'll move to eleven point oh three is the review of board policies. We do have some first readings, uh, board policies. So if you would review those and have any questions, reach out to Dr. McKinney, uh, prior to the next meeting when we will, uh, vote on these for approval. Uh, twelve point oh citizen comments regarding non-Juda items. Uh, because we're meeting over Zoom again, we won't have any citizen comments heard tonight. Uh, if you would like to make, uh, comment to the board again, email B O E at Lindberghschools.ws and we encourage you to do that. We will take your comments at any time through email. Uh, so we'll move to thirteen point oh, which is recess. We already conducted our executive session, so there's no need. Uh, we'll move to, um, adjournment. Fifteen point oh, do I have a motion to adjourn board meeting number fifteen forty eight?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kat, second? It was second.
Megan.
Second by Megan. Roll call vote on this as well. So I'll go first this time. Mike Cham, yes. Jennifer Miller?
Yes.
Christie Watts?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mike Tischlis?
Yes.
Yes. Karla Lorenz?
Yes.
Yes. Matt Alonso?
Yes.
And Megan Vetter?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries surprisingly seven point oh. So board meeting fifteen forty eight is, thank you for joining us.